So with that, what I'd like to do then is ask the committee just quickly here. My intention would be to hold a special meeting in two weeks to get down in the gritty items on closing out Ledyard Middle School and Gallup Hill School. Is there any member of the committee who would not be available for a special meeting two weeks from tonight? 5:00 PM online.
I don't, I think it won't be a problem, but I have to check first.
Okay. With that, I think we got quite a big number of committee members that can make that. So I ask you all to go ahead and put that on your calendar. We'll get an agenda out for that, and that'll allow us to spend the time that we need on some of the topics that we need to discuss. So this is my first meeting back. I was out of town for a couple of weeks. I know Mr. Hosey has joined us since then. George, I want to welcome you to the permanent municipal building committee. There's times when this is an awful lot of work and there's times when it's not. We look forward to your assistance and your participation as we move forward.
Thank you.
All right, so first item up is, by the way, guys, just let you know, I didn't watch the video and read the course of minutes from the last meeting to get myself up to speed. And with that, let's go ahead and I will entertain motions for the approval of the meeting minutes from 1 November 2021.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Tominski has made the motion to approve the meeting minutes. Do I hear a second?
Steve Munger.
All right, Steve Munger has seconded that. Is there any discussion on the meeting minutes? Okay, hearing no discussion, all in favor of approving the meeting minutes as written, signify by saying your name and I. Steve Jaskiewicz, I.
Steve McIntyre, I.
Jerry Tomisky, I.
Steve Munger, I.
George Hosey, I.
Kate Topham, I.
Okay, with that, the I's have it. I'd like for the record to show that Marcia, I believe that's Marcia H., Marcia Hancock, Town of Ledyard Finance Director, has joined the meeting. All right. Moving along, do we have any citizens that are, I'm looking at the dialed-in participants. I don't see anyone who we have not accounted for. So I'll pause for a few seconds to be sure. All right, hearing none, let's move on. I have no, as far as informational items, just take a second here. Pete McIntyre, did you want to address what you called me on earlier today?
No, Steve, I'm going to Florida during this week and I'll be back next week. And I have a better idea what's going to be happening then, but I am contemplating retiring. I'm not retiring from the committee.
Okay, do you anticipate being in our meeting on the 20th though?
Yeah, I think I'll try to make it. If not, I'll let you know prematurely before it happens.
All right, I appreciate it. You've been on this committee since its inception and your participation has been important. Just let us know what your plans are, Pete. Thanks. All right, with that, there's no other informational items. So now, item seven here, kind of the top of the agenda. I know that Marcia Hancock is on board now. So Marcia, I'd like to go ahead and let you address the committee on what you need from us. And the item is for discussion on bonding costs, closeout of roof project and Ledyard Middle School. So I think that we're not closing out the roof projects. We're these, the prior roof projects. So either way, the floor is yours, Marcia.
Thank you, Steve. We're going to be going out to bond and sell short-term notes again in May. I had hoped that this would be the time that we could finish bonding the town, at least the towns portion. Unfortunately, at this point, the remaining amount, the 11% holdback that the state is holding on to is much more than the remaining town bonding portion. I met with bond counsel and our financial advisor on Thursday. We're trying to be creative and think of ways that that we can get the state moving on an audit so that we can close out the project. That doesn't seem to be happening. I don't think I have to tell any of you people that across the state it is happening. It's happening with a lot of the school construction projects. So I'd at least like to get that, the town portion locked down and continue to, I mean, at this point, it may just be, it may be that the only option left to us is to pound on the state legislature and say, you guys passed this law and the state is more than happy to hold back our 11%. That's in the same law that says that audits have to be done within six months. I don't, it's just unconscionable that they'll hold our whole 11%, but not not do the rest of the things that they're supposed to do as part of that law. So I know that Wayne is in the process of getting the last reimbursement request into the state. I had thought maybe we can appeal to the legislature to give us, at least give us the 6% now that they added on to that law so that we're only holding the bag for 5% until the audit's done. But at this point, it's not looking good in terms of what we still have as a surplus. If they wait four or five years to do the audit, like, and I'd be interested to hear what Dan has to say about what other, Steve, what you see with other districts, other projects. I don't know how we're going to get around this. We can't self-fund it. So that's where we are with that. You're muted, Steve.
Just two things on that real quickly, just to make sure. We would have to ask the state legislature for special legislation in order to approve that. And I think that's something that the mayor could bring up with our state senator and our two state representatives. If this thing drags out, I think we're going to have three state representatives because we're getting redistricted. But to see what they can do in the interim. So when we're coming up with our finalized cost for the purposes of what we will bond, because for the committee, Marcia and I have talked about this in the past, and there is a danger to overbonding. You know, if we tried to bond money that we would later get reimbursed, there's some problems with doing that. This isn't meant to be a finance lesson. But am I correct that it would be reasonable for us to, when it comes to change orders and things, that we can make a reasonable assumption that for the purposes of bonding, the state doesn't approve any change orders. We bond more of that money upfront. And so if there's any chance they would disapprove it, we bond it. And then we see how that moves to the right. That would maybe help some. But the 11% versus, you know, 5%, that's something I think we just need to sit down and talk to our state reps about in the interim.
Yep, and there's a possibility that we could go out and seek private funding, which would allow us to pay back to prepay essentially, let's say we borrowed, it has to be a smaller amount, couldn't be the whole $9 million that the state owes us right now. But if we could do that for, say, $2 or $3 million, and that way, when we get the money back from the state, we can just turn that back around to the issuers of the, of the private funding. And then if we could get the state to give us our 6%, then it would be more manageable, so.
Should I contact the mayor to arrange a discussion in advance to bring everything up to speed? And then we can talk to our state reps? Does that make sense?
I think that's a good idea, much like we did that, that other time when we went up to Hartford altogether.
That may be required at this point. All right, does anyone have any questions for Marcia while she's on? I know that, you know, this is a, when we started this project, we expected, we only have a 5% holdback. Also, the states played around with, for a while, they said, well, if we don't do your audit in six months, you can do your own. And then they came out and said, you can't. And just quickly, Steve June or Dan Hetzer, what are you seeing, any changes in the state, or has COVID just slowed everything down to a halt or what? Over to either of you.
I have not seen any changes, but I'm not on that bandwidth, so.
Yeah, I'd have to say the same, is that I have not heard, a couple of projects went through audit, maybe six months ago, that I can check with the team to see when they submitted their EDOFs. But I'm, you know, personally, I haven't put a project through that's gone to audit in some years here.
Steve June and Dan both, for our meeting on the 20th, is it possible you guys could feel back to your companies that would have some visibility on this and say, hey, any that have recently gone to audit, when they were closed out?
I can do that.
My understanding is the state was running in a four to six-year window not long ago. So we'll see how that's going.
Steve.
Yes.
Excuse me, Steve?
Yes.
Yeah, as the new guy, maybe my question's a little off, but maybe you can help me out here. If I'm understanding the discussion correctly, there was a law change that increased the holdback from, what, 5% to 11%? And at the same time, that law mandated an audit within six months? Is that correct?
Yeah, what happened was the state came out with a, I think it was an administrative policy on part, part law. So they changed the law on the holdback. But the administrative policy, I believe it was administrative policy, I have to go back and look, is, at one point, they said, we're going to do all audits within six months. This was before COVID though, George.
Right.
And they came out and said, but, and if you don't get an audit within six months, you can pay for your own audit. We'll reimburse you the cost of the audit, and then you can do it that way. But then after that, the state rescinded that, I believe it was an administrative decision within the Office of School Construction Grants. And, and so now, but we started the project with a expectation of a 5% holdback, and we're living with 11 because they changed the law midstream, and it was, there was no grandfather clause.
Really? Right, I'm just wondering if, because they're not doing the audit in the time prescribed, do we have any legal avenues of any sort?
Not legal, not legal, but legislative, meaning we can talk to our state reps and our state senator, Kathy Austin, and ask them for a special, potentially special legislation that they would approve. They do that for some school projects for when people need to have like a square foot waiver or all kinds of other things? You know, like, due to special considerations, they'll slide something into the session. So I will ask them, I don't want to. Go ahead.
So the state's not actually mandated to perform the audit within six months' time?
No. Not to my knowledge.
They're just mandated to keep our money.
Well, the mandate is the, is the whole, is the.
Right, they're mandated to hold on to our money, yes.
That's correct, so.
Okay.
It's unfortunate, and.
All right, thank you for clarifying that, though. I was, I was just wondering if there was any avenue the town lawyer could pursue, but it doesn't sound like there's much there.
Yeah, you can't, you can't sue a state when they change the law. But what we can do, though, is ask for special dispensation. And then lastly, the person to make that initial call and ask for that phone call is the mayor.
Right.
We'll ask him to set that up.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Steve, I have a question for Marcia. On the holdback that we, that the state is holding, and if we have to hold it for five or six years, do you have an estimate of what additional cost that would be for the town?
Our finance, fiscal, financial advisor for, that does all, excuse me, all of our bond and note issuances, who helps us through that process, is currently putting a spreadsheet together what it would cost if we went five years without bonding and then comparing that to private borrowing. And she's going to include all of that information in the spreadsheet. So as soon as she does that, I'll, I'll let you know.
Thanks.
You're muted, Pete.
My apologies, I've been trying to mute because there's some noise in the background here. My, my intention here now is to not go through the heavy discussion that can last for a very, very long time on ongoing work, but instead, get through the change, and the change orders are important because I had some communications with Dan Hetzer since the last meeting and said, hey, when are you going to get me these final invoices and things so we can get an EDO49, closeout on Gallup Hill? And he says, hey, I need these change orders done so I can do the final and get you a final invoice. So this is important that we get these done so that we can get this project, get the last things done and get the project closed out. So my goal here is to get some change orders paid, pay some bills, vote on our meeting schedule, which we have to get that done. And then if it's up on 5:30, we'll get the folks that need to get out, out of here. So if no one has any issues with that, what I'd like to do is to move on to item 8.3, which are change orders. Dan, what I'd like you to do is just give a quick explanation of a change order. We can see the paperwork, it's attached to our agenda, and then we can be able to move on and vote. That's Dan.
I moved, sorry about that, I was muted. I moved two change order proposals over to, over Petroselli, and that's to close out the allowance on the structural steel contract for Gallup Hill, which is pretty straightforward as far as what that, you know, what is, we utilized a certain portion of that allowance through construction. There was $21,005 left over at the end of construction, and now we're returning those funds to the town and taking a last change order against the trade.
Okay, and, and Dan, we also have a roofing allowance on Gallup Hill as well?
I'm sorry, I said, I said structural steel, but I was actually speaking to roofing.
No, we have, we have, on the agenda, we have three items. We have a roofing allowance at 64112. We have 21887 on steel. And then we have one called door pull brick wash. And that one's also a negative change order, money coming back, but I wanted, that's the main one I wanted you to explain.
Okay, so just to be quick then, yes, similarly, the roofing trade contract allowances were reconciled and closed out and presented. I apologize, I don't have a copy of the agenda on my screen. The, the last is two scopes of work that were included in the punch list to close out. One was an exterior door pull that, that had failed prematurely, and after going back and forth and back and forth, we've solicited for that work ourselves here at ONG, funded that work. And as I have done in the previous, whenever ONG is going to move funds from your construction contingency over to ONG to pay for that work, I present it as a PCO or a COR.
Right, so my question on that one is, on the door pulls, is, is that if they fail with a, why didn't Park Rowway just pay for the door pulls as part of warranty or whatever?
The, the back and forth between ourselves and Park Rowway included that, you know, was there some sort of a damage, some sort of an environmental condition after they installed, installed the pole? You know, initially, it was, you know, were they cleaned? Did it, did it have something to do with, you know, can you just clean them? And after physically checking them myself, I, I concurred with Wayne in that the, the finish was damaged by something. Whether it was the brick wash, whether it was an environmental condition where it was left dirty, and then, you know, the eight through to the stainless, in any case, that was not something I could pin on Park Rowway.
All right, understand. And then the, the brick wash itself?
The brick wash was a commitment that Matt Belcher had made to Wayne way back before leaving the project. There was again some back and forth as to whether it was really required, whether the trade had performed the work initially, and then some other condition had, had caused the efflorescence. Efflorescence is fairly common in, you know, in the, in masonry work. So again, that, moving this project to closure is the goal here. I did not want to leave the efflorescent in the condition that it was. So I went out, aside from the masonry contract, found a reputable mason to perform the work and had the work performed under direct contract with ONG.
All right, understand. All right, Wayne, has that brick wash solved the problem we were having with effervescence at the Gallup Hill School?
Yes, just so you're aware that prior to the opening in August of 2019, they, you've already paid for this work to be done, and it wasn't completed. That's why the, it was on the punch list to come back and complete that work. The area over the gymnasium, the roof area, that the brickwork that came up on the, if the hallway that goes up was never cleaned at that time, even though it was paid for by the committee. And the door handles were on the punch list since, before we took over that section of the building in June of 2019.
All right, so, so Dan, in this case here, again, you know, that's one of the reasons I brought these two up here is, the, so this work was paid for. I understand the experience of trying to close it out, and the contract was unrealistic. It is still going to be, you know, an $800 charge to the town. I guess I'm a little bit concerned about us paying for this work twice.
Agreed, Steve, in that effort was made to reconcile with Park Rowway on multiple occasions as to the door pulls. As far as the, the scope of work for the efflorescence, I was not able to, you know, to find a condition in which something was not washed by, you know, when, when a mason washes down the brick veneer, he's taking off the, you know, the, the cementous material. And that's really the process of washing down. We didn't find any areas on the building that that had not occurred. But I do understand, you know, I was not there at the time. And, and what I think the majority of the work that was done in this recent mobilization was for efflorescence and to, you know, improve some areas of the brick veneer so that you were left with a final product. In addition to washing down, they also sealed the block, the brick veneer, so that reoccurring efflorescence wouldn't be an ongoing.
So was the ceiling part of the original requirement for the contract when it was done?
No, it's not.
Okay, well, I can understand the cost for the ceiling on that, but I, I do have some concerns on this, and I want to have some further discussion with Wayne with respect to change order 227, because the, it does seem like we're getting charged twice for something here. And granted, it's $800, and I don't want to month-bond hold this thing up for that. But the fact of the matter is, we shouldn't be held hostage to that, and this should be, you know, if, if ONG can't get the contractor to provide that, and that's something that we've been, I know that that effervescence problem has been there for a long, long time. I remember standing out there during election season and seeing it up there. You know, this is something that I feel ONG should have held the, the trade contractor responsible for, or somehow just resolve the problem. So I'd like to get some more information on this particular one, albeit a small amount of money. Nonetheless, there's some principle involved here. And we will have a further discussion of 227 at our next meeting. So I don't plan to make a motion to approve that one tonight. If any member of the committee feels differently, when we get to 8.4, when I say I'll entertain motions, if no one makes one, we'll continue and move on. So 8.3 is change order 229, roofing allowance closed out in the amount of, a negative change order in the amount of $6,412. And I move that we approve a change order.
Second, feedback guitar.
Send my Mr. McIntyre, any discussion on 8.3, change order 229? It is in order, a hearing none, all in favor of approving the change order 229, signify by saying your name and I. Steve Jaskiewicz, I.
Steve McIntyre, I.
Jerry Tomisky, I.
Kate Topham, I.
Steve Munger, I.
George Hosey, I.
With that, the I's have it. Motion for the change order approval is, is over. At this point, if anyone would like to make a motion for 227, the door pull brick wash, we just discussed. I'll pause 30 seconds. My intention is to table it otherwise. Very well, moving on to 8.5, this is change order number 65, ONG Industries. This is a steel allowance closeout in a negative change order, money back to us, or money we don't spend, in the amount of $21,887. Motion is made.
Second, feedback guitar.
Send by Mr. McIntyre, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the change order 65, signify by saying your name and I. Steve Jaskiewicz, I.
Steve McIntyre, I.
Jerry Tomisky, I.
Kate Topham, I.
Steve Munger, I.
George Hosey, I.
Okay, with that, the I's have it. That motion is, and the change order number 65 is approved. Rolling down, 8.6 is really the header for the ones that follow, so 8.7. At this point here, Wayne, we still have not received our final items. I know, Lisa, you had sent a note, and there was some discussion in the last meeting about communications with SES. Does anyone have anything to report related to this bill that we keep pushing to the right?
There was an email from SES wanting to set up the final meeting. I don't know where that stands, Dan.
We've confirmed that, Wayne, that meeting is scheduled now for Thursday, the 16th at 1:00 PM.
Excellent. Provided that goes the way it should, we can pay that bill on the 20th. Or, yeah, 20th, our next meeting. Lisa, can you let them know that we have tabled that? I know they're calling you on this one.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to 8.8, these are two Silver Petrocelli Associates invoices. Both are based on their time and materials contract with us. At this point, because of the way the contracts were written, George, is, at this point, the, when things go beyond a certain time, the architects just go to a time materials basis with us, so we don't pay monthly large construction administration fee. So these are basically time for them to continue to support us as a customer in this timeframe. So we have these small bills each month, a few hours of labor and things. You'll see the detail when you, when you drill down. So with this, we have a motion, so I move that we approve AIA application 212311, Silver Petrocelli Associates, for their time materials contract for Ledyard Middle School in the amount of $565.25.
Second, feedback guitar.
Send by Mr. McIntyre, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the invoice, application 212311, signify by saying your name and I. Steve Jaskiewicz, I.
Steve McIntyre, I.
Jerry Tomisky, I.
Kate Topham, I.
Steve Munger, I.
George Hosey, I.
With that, the I's have it, that motion is approved. Similarly, same explanation, but this is for Gallup Hill School, application 212308 for Silver Petrocelli Associates, in the amount of $2,261.25. That application for payment is in order, and I move that we make payment.
Second, feedback guitar.
Send by Mr. McIntyre, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the invoice, signify by saying your name and I. Steve Jaskiewicz, I.
Steve McIntyre, I.
Jerry Tomisky, I.
Kate Topham, I.
Steve Munger, I.
George Hosey, I.
With that, the I's have it. Moving on to number nine here, we are now on the Ledyard High School Track and Field Project. We never actually paid the final retainage bill that Stone gave us, application number nine. And this, we actually had to go back, do some research, and thought, you know, we had paid all the bills, it was retainage there. And Wayne, the work has been done for some time. This was kind of an administrative area that we never paid the final bill. I'm kind of surprised Stone didn't come back to us. Do you have anything to add before we vote on this application?
The reason that they didn't come back is because they still owed us the final paperwork, the documentation, warranty information, maintenance logs and all that for the, which they did provide a couple of weeks ago when I sent it over to the committee.
All right, obviously, they could have got some of that retained back without all of that. But either way, it's now ready for payment. This is HI Stone, final application, number nine. It's dated close to a year ago, but nonetheless, $58,317.10 closes out the high school track and field project basically on budget, and it was done on the, on the revised schedule based on, you know, weather and other things. So I move that we make payment.
Second, feedback guitar.
Send by Mr. McIntyre, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the payment to HI Stone, application number nine, signify by saying your name and I. Steve Jaskiewicz, I.
Steve McIntyre, I.
Jerry Tomisky, I.
Kate Topham, I.
Steve Munger, I.
George Hosey, I.
With that, the I's have it, that motion is approved. And Kate and Steve, I'm trying to get us done here in a couple of minutes to get to your meeting. All right, so Wayne, is there anything pertinent in 10 Gales Ferry and the high school summer projects or the auditorium that cannot wait till the 20th?
Nope, everything can wait.
All right, we'll pass over those. Number 12 on the agenda is approval of our calendar year 2022 meeting schedule. I would, I move that we, at this point here, we're going to continue to hold our meetings in Zoom with Omicron coming out and things. We will revisit, also the weather. We'll revisit in probably March timeframe to go back to meeting in person. We're saving some money with transport of some of our attendees, or we'll go to a hybrid meeting of some kind. So with this, I move that we approve the twenty twenty meeting schedule as published in our agenda with meetings on January third, February seventh, March seventh, April fourth, May second, June sixth, July fifth, which is a Tuesday, August first, September sixth, which is a Tuesday, October third, November seventh, and December fifth. And with one meeting into twenty twenty three, January third. Motion's been made.
Kate Tama Herb, second.
Saying by Kate Tama Herb, any Any discussion? Hearing none, all, I'm sorry.
No, no, Steve, just a quick question. Are we keeping it at five or we can push it back a few minutes?
Okay, in discussion here, is there, this has come up a couple of times due to people that have day jobs, myself included. Does any committee member have an issue with moving our meetings to five thirty PM? If so, if someone would like to make a friendly amendment to move that to five thirty PM, I will entertain those now.
We'll make the amendment that we move the meeting to five thirty vice five.
Okay, a friendly amendment's been placed for, to make the meeting time five thirty. Would anyone like to second that friendly amendment?
This is Kate, I'll second.
Saying by Kate Tama Herb. With that, the motion is now for five thirty PM, the dates I had listed. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the meeting schedule for five thirty meetings as printed in our agenda for the dates. Signified by saying your name and I, Steve Juszczyk, it's I.
Steve McIntyre, Steve.
Jerry, Timbisky, I.
Kate Tama Herb, I.
Steve Munger, I.
George Jose, I.
With that, the eyes have it. So lastly here, I would just like to congratulate Steve Munger and Kate Tama Herb on their reelections to the Board of Ed And wishing the best in their swearing in tonight. My apologies for the truncated meeting tonight. It's important, we understand people have You know, there's probably about a hundred people that do everything in the town, and we just happen to have them on multiple committees. Thank you for your service to the town. So does anyone have anything else to bring before the committee tonight? If not, you'll see an agenda for a meeting at, let's go ahead and make it at five thirty On the twentieth of December via Zoom. And that will be it. Does anybody, if I don't hear anything else, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of journey, signified by saying your name.
Hey.
We're out of here.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for dialing in. I'll see you guys on the twentieth. Thank you, Steve. Thanks, Lisa, and we'll, I'll be in touch. I'll be in touch with you on the agenda.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Alrighty.
Thanks. All right, thanks, Pete. Good night, everybody.